You are. And then we will start talking, we'll get through the list of questions that we have and then we'll just free for all after that. So.
Sounds good.
Carrie Anne, can you tell us a little about yourself and what motivated you to run for council?
Sure. I I was born and raised in Ontario and I've actually been living here in Alberta since I was twenty two years old. So can I?
You just moved a couple of years ago?
Yeah, right. Yeah. So it's far, far longer than I actually lived in Ontario. Now I've been in Alberta. So can I call myself an Albertan yet?
Absolutely. Yes.
What do you think? Okay, good. Yeah. Yeah. So when I was young and first moved here, I moved here by myself. Um, I was working initially for Canadian Tires head office and I did an event marketing program in Western Canada. Loved Calgary, fell in love with it. So I got in my little nineteen eighty Acadian and drove myself out to Alberta to look for a job. Um, and ended up working in the oil and gas industry for probably a decade in marketing communications, which was great. Um, in two thousand nine, I moved to Oketoks when my kids were little. And we started out renting in Oketoks and then we built an acreage in Foothills County. So I was one of those people who paid taxes in Foothills County and used all of Oketoks amenities.
Right. Yeah. We're judging you.
Yeah. And then, uh, but I've lived in Oketoks now as a homeowner for the last almost eleven years.
Okay.
I am pretty involved in the community. I was the founder of Rebel Bean Roasters Coffee. Familiar with it. First coffee roaster in the region back in two thousand fourteen. So I founded that business and built it. And initially, I don't know how long you've been in Oketoks, but for the first few years, we operated inside Homeground Coffee House. So you can't, um, you know, be there every day without ending up knowing a lot of people and a lot of what's going on in town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then I sold that business in twenty twenty one. And, um, worked at the Corner Co-Working, which was in the Arts and Learning Center until just recently. I was the community, community manager there. And, um, as part of that, I met my current employer, um, who was a member there. And so now I'm managing Kinder Roots Therapy, which is a team of about ten psychologists and social workers. And I, I run the business side of things, which has been great. Um, I'm also very involved in different charitable and, uh, other organizations around town. If I find something that I'm really passionate about and feel like I can contribute in some way, I'm all in, which it makes for a very busy schedule, but a very full heart. Um, I was on the Board of Directors for Community Futures Highwood for four years as Member-at-Large representing Oketoks and then as Treasurer. Um, and that I felt very strongly about because I got my start for Rebel Bean with funding from Community Futures. So I know, you know, knew firsthand the impact that that had. Um, I also was on the Oketoks Youth Justice Committee for a few years. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Yeah, again, just felt very strongly that teenagers, being teenagers, sometimes make mistakes and they should have consequences, but not the kind that derails their lives. So, um, that was pretty important to me. And over the last couple of years, I joined the Oketoks Rotary Club. Um, they sent my, they sponsored my daughter on an international youth exchange a couple of years ago. So, um, yeah, and I've really, really enjoyed that. And that involves lots of, of community involvement. For sure. Soapbox Derby and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you're very busy in the, in the community, which is fantastic. So what, what then pushed you over the edge to put your name in the hot to run for?
I definitely never, never thought being a politician would be part of my plan. In fact, using the word politician attached to me feels weird. But, um, and it's not something I had in my sights until even just a couple of months ago, when councillor Sven Seed announced that she wasn't going to run and some friends, some friends said, you should run. And at first I absolutely dismissed it because, you know, that who wants to sacrifice their life for town council? Cause that's kind of what it feels like in some cases. Uh, but that planted the seed. And then I took a look at the list of candidates at that time, which was very short then. And felt like there wasn't really anyone on that list at that point that had the, you know, kind of represented my voice on council. Like I wouldn't have felt represented by any of those candidates. And it was looking like there wasn't going to be very many. Um, so I, that just triggered a number of conversations to, as to whether or not it would be something I'd be interested in. So I talked to, um, some existing, um, council members, some previous council members in different municipalities. I talked to my employer to make sure that, you know, I could make this work with my work life. Um, just did a lot of research about what being a councillor actually was going to involve. And, um, so once I had done all that research, I went to the only table that really matters, my kitchen table, and talked to my family, uh, my husband and, uh, my kids. My kids are, are grown now. I just sent my baby off to university in New Brunswick.
Oh, really?
And, yeah. And my husband is on board and supportive and it just felt like that I have the time right now. I have the passion. And so then it shifted to a conversation of why not me? And as you can see, I'm here. So I guess there was no good answer to why not me.
Right, for sure.
So I find my name on the ballot and here we are.
Yeah. No, and the second question here on this list is what is your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
I don't feel like my vision is very complicated. It's to pay the least amount of taxes to have the best possible town to live, work and play in. Like, isn't that everybody's vision for Oketoks?
Yes.
You know, that ultimately that, that's what, uh, what I'm hoping to, that's what I see as the vision. Um, in terms of what role I play, I think my role in particular has more to do with my own skill set and personality. In terms of what I can bring to the table. Um, I am just a reasonable person, very business minded. I have a reputation for being direct, which, um, I've sort of grown into and realized that that's actually a, a strength, not a weakness.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
And I have a willingness to serve. So, you know, I think that that's really the role I play. And in, in council, that's really all you can ask of your councillor.
For sure. In your view, what are the top two or three issues facing Oketoks right now? And how would you approach them if elected?
Okay. Um, well, I, I want to preface this answer by saying that at this point, I'm just a resident. I mean, I'm probably more informed on the issues than many residents, but I'm still just a resident and don't have all the same information that a town councillor would have. So, and I'm just starting my conversations with residents about the issues that they're facing. And what I'm noticing is that a lot of what they find an issue is not something that has impacted my life personally. Does not mean it's not an issue. Um, cause it obviously is for them and for others, but for me, it's not. Um, I would say probably the, with the information I have and the perspective I have, I'd say the main issue is managing the complications that are coming from growth. And you'll notice I say managing, not stopping growth. Because I feel like, um, there is no stopping the growth at this point. Our province has, has decided that they're attracting people to Alberta. And of course, when those people come to Alberta, we're, Oketoks is a very desirable community, close to an urban center. So we are going to grow. And that gives us, you know, a greater tax base, but it does present some other challenges, which I know that we'll get into later. But really balancing that growth is, and managing it is probably the biggest issue. But there are others. Um, the only issue I find that, that I personally have experienced in the last few years is the noise. I live in a community that's adjacent to Northridge Drive. And so the traffic noise over the last few years has really increased and has started to impact my enjoyment of my home. It's to the point where especially at night, I sleep with, with, um, earplugs in now so that I can sleep. And, um, I've tried to, you know, reframe it in my mind that, uh, this is kind of like living in New York City. Isn't that exciting to be able to hear? Hear urban noises all night?
Yeah.
But, um, but yeah, it's, that has become an issue. I understand there is a study in place right now that the town is doing and I'm, I'm anxious to hear, um, what they recommend, what they find and what they recommend. Um, so yeah, noise is an issue. Also related to growth, um, I think traffic is a concern. Um, and I do wonder if at the planning stages, if there has, could be more consideration into, put into, um, roundabouts rather than intersections. I feel like that that would potentially um, alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we're seeing. And from, also from what I understand, there's less, less traffic accidents that happen in roundabouts and some of those things. I'm sure the planning department has put way more thought into this than I have. And I'm sure they have reasons why that wasn't the case in some of the new communities. But I, I do think that I'd be interested to know what the thinking is there and whether or not that is an option.
Well, I, sorry, not to cut you off, but I'm going to cut you off.
Yep.
The, the roundabouts, I also think help with the traffic noise as well. Like if the traffic's flowing, it's the, the traffic noise really starts at traffic lights, starts and stops, right? But if you get a roundabout, the traffic noise just kind of continues to flow. I know there are some cars that will make noise no matter what they're doing, but, uh, that's, that's, I know that that's what you're talking about. So.
But they do make less noise if they're not accelerating from a stop sign or stop light or whatever. Yeah. So I agree. That would make a difference.
Yeah. I, I think you basically touched on question number four where it says Oketoks continues to face the challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining its character and livability? And I think you certainly did touch on that there. Your last answer there.
I would like to expand on that though.
Please.
Cause I really think that, that, like managing that growth is the crux of all the issues right now for Oketoks. We're kind of at that crossroad. Um, and like I said, we're not going to stop growth at this point. We like, yeah, people are moving to Alberta and they want to live in Oketoks. And I, I'm sure you've been here long enough to know what happened when the town set a limit on growth and, um, then Foothills County just developed all around.
Yeah.
And people like me were living in Foothills County, paying taxes there and still using our services. So like to, to put a cap on growth isn't a possibility. And from what I understand, like that, that's not even legal at this point. The province has put restrictions. So if, if Oketoks were to cap growth at this point, it, we would have to cap it at like a hundred and ten thousand people or something, something like that. So, um, yeah, so people think, well, so as long as we build, build more houses, people will come. And so people, their reaction to that is, well, let's stop building houses. So what happens then? Are, it's a supply and demand issue. So then the houses that we have go up in value. So people, when they move here, well, they, they maybe can't move here because they can't afford to live in Oketoks. And as well, because our property taxes are tied to our, the market value of our homes. If the, the values of our homes go up, so do our property taxes. And as we've seen so far in this election, people don't want to pay more for taxes. So, you know, that's not an option either. So, so then we build more houses and then more people come. And then we have more people using our infrastructure and services. We need wider roads. We need, need more police, more fire, more recreational facilities. And we're already seeing that people want that and they want it right now. But I know that you know that the municipal government is not allowed to run a deficit. We have to run a balanced budget. So it's easy to think, well, we need all this stuff now, but it's not feasible. And I like to think of it as like, if you're running a successful business or even your household, you're running your household and you need some sort of infrastructure upgrade. I'm going to use the example of windows and doors because I actually do need windows and doors in my house right now.
Yeah.
And, and yeah. So, you know, so you have this expense that you need to incur, but you have no access to credit. Cause normally as a household, a homeowner, that's what you would do, right? You would just finance it. Well, the town can't do that. So we either need to have enough, we have to wait to replace our windows and doors until we have enough in savings, or we need to bring in more income. And in the case of the town, that would be the tax base. So, so you have a little bit of money in savings. It's still not enough to buy your windows and doors. So what do you do? You have to make some sacrifices. So maybe this year, your kid can't play hockey. Or you are not going to invest in landscaping in your home because the deer are just going to eat the flowers anyway. So these are the kinds of decisions that the town council has to make on a larger scale with the town. So I feel like it's unreasonable to expect that you, you don't want people to move here. Or, and if they do, you need to spend all this money on infrastructure, but you don't have the credit to do that. So it's just, it's, it's a hard position.
Absolutely. No, it's, uh, it's certainly not a, uh, I, and, and I do appreciate they, uh, have to balance their budget every year. And like I talked to the mayor the other day, I wish all levels of government had to do that. I think we'd be in a very different place, uh, as a nation, as a province, everything would be completely different. So, yeah, it's not.
I feel like the residents, the residents don't recognize that. Like, cause yeah, sure. It would be great to say, let's twin thirty second avenue now and let's increase, you know, the, the, the capability of the rec center and all these different things. It would be great. But where does the money come from? At the same time as saying, I don't want to pay more in taxes.
Right. Yeah.
And it's, like I said, it's just like balancing a household budget. You have to decide what your priorities are and how you're going to make that happen. And that's the, that's the struggle that the town faces.
Absolutely. Many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
I've given this a fair amount of thought. My background, my educational background is in public relations and communications. So I think, I mean, two-way communication is essential to this all running properly. Um, one, I, I would, I would like to see residents be more engaged throughout the year, not just at election time, for one. And I know the temptation is to just use social media to, you know, have that level of transparency, but we've both seen what happens there. It quickly turns into a cesspool of negativity and people don't come to the comments in order to get their mind changed, right? That's just not what happens. So I don't think it's, uh, while I do think social media has a place, I don't think that that is the best place to actually have thoughtful conversations and, um, communicate about the issues. I think what you're doing, I'm, I mean, I'm a podcast junkie, so maybe that's part of it. But, um, I think this kind of long form communication is essential to, to those kinds of things. Like maybe after every, um, not to plan your, your, your podcast, but after every, after every council meeting, if you had a, a town councillor on to talk about what actually transpired at the meeting, how the decisions were made, how people voted, that kind of thing. And then maybe do like a question and answer, something that's a little bit back and forth with residents that they could send in their questions, something like that as well as, you know, something similar, but also on the local radio station, maybe a regular column in the newspaper. Because the other problem with social media is not everybody is on it. And less and less all the time. And you particularly miss the, the seniors demographic, um, by just keeping your communication on social media. So I feel like there's going to have to be a little, like more than a, a one-pronged approach. Um, and then also the council right now has been already doing lots of in-person, um, meet the council sort of events at public, public events. And I think that definitely needs to continue. I think, but again, it comes down to having an engaged and informed resident community as well. Like the, the residents have to want the information.
Right. Did I just hear a car in the background?
Yeah, but I'm at work.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought we were. It's crazy senior citizens ripping up and down the streets, eh? No. Uh, town council works as a team and also with Foothills County and the province. How would you approach collaboration and compromise to get results for Oketoks?
Yeah, for sure. And that's essential. Um, council doesn't operate in a vacuum. So it's really, um, creating those relationships, particularly with the province is essential. I'm very collaborative by nature and I have a personal value of acceptance and inclusivity that does not stop at, you know, the people who have different opinions than mine. I, so, yeah, I, I feel strongly about democracy. And if somebody is sitting at the table who was elected, whether they, I agree with their policies or not. Um, I respect the fact that they are there and that I have something to learn from them. So, um, I mean, I think that's kind of the basis of, of a good collaborative relationship.
Yes, absolutely. For residents, remember just one thing about you after listening to this conversation. What should it be?
Um, I'd like them to think of me as a highly capable town councillor. I have, um, I have relevant experience in business, also in, um, governance boards. Um, I'm a clear and direct communicator. But I mean, ultimately I'm just, I, I'm just going to be me. And, um, hopefully what, who I am and my personal values resonate with some people and they vote for me. And, um, hopefully there's enough people that vote for me that I end up on town council. But if not, I hope that there is somebody on town council that they align with. And then they get the, the, the council that they're, they're looking for. I mean, that, that's the beauty of these kinds of council arrangements is that there needs to be somebody on, like, it would be crazy if it was a one-sided sort of council where everybody thinks the same. It really should be representative of the community and all the issues that different people care about. So, yeah. I just, just want them to, to know me and feel like they can trust me and that I'm a capable candidate.
Absolutely. Well, those are the, uh, seven questions. I, to be honest, I hate reading questions and, you know, asking people questions. I just like to have a conversation. Uh, I just want to have a, a format that everybody needs to follow. Everybody kind of, you know, so if people do listen to all fourteen, fifteen, sixteen councillors, that would be awesome. Something that you said that I want to go back to is, uh, you, at one point you looked at the list of councillors that were running and you felt that there was a voice that was missing. Can you explain what your voice is?
Well, at the time, the voices on the list weren't, there was no females for one. I would say my voice represents, um, one of someone who's kind of had the life cycle of a family here too. When we moved to Oketoks, my, um, oldest was in kindergarten. My youngest was three. Um, they're now nineteen and twenty-one. Um, so we've been here for the whole community. I also bring the unique position of being a business owner. And a small business. I have nonprofit experience, community organizations. Um, yeah, just, and I, I feel, I just feel like my voice is one of reason and, um, logic. I, I, I know, I feel like it's, it's one that's approachable and also willing to change. Like I can change my mind and, um, if given the right information.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, that's so vital.
Yeah. Cause some people just seem like they're really stuck in and yeah, that's, that's, I, it's reasonable.
Yeah, no, for sure. No, and that's, that's the thing about municipal politics is you can't really lock in. Cause if you, if you, if you lock in and your side of the, you know, you all kind of part ways and go with the partisan side of things. And all of a sudden, everybody locks into their side of the, the thing. They're, they're never going to get anything done. Um, unless you don't, you don't have the majority or whatever. And that's, that's the beautiful thing about municipal politics is you have to figure it out. And I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to other people on the podcast about that already. And I just,
Yeah.
I, I love municipal politics and, um, I wish that would be the way that it was in Edmonton and Ottawa as well.
I think it would be, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Every councillor only gets one vote. The mayor only has one vote. So really it comes down to, um, finding out what the issues are, listening to the residents, learning about the issues, um, learning as much as you can from all the resources available. Because I think the difference between a town councillor and a resident is really just information. They're really there, you know, the town councillor is just a, a resident who has all the information. So they get that information. They then educate and it could be a matter of educating the other town councillors so that you can, you know, try and have a majority when it comes to voting, or it could be educating the residents on why the decisions were made the way they were. But yeah, that's, that's the role of it in, in my opinion. And yeah, the promises that I hear being made already, even in the, in the election, I, I don't understand because they, they'd have to convince me or whoever else is elected of those same things. And I don't think it's as easy as people think.
No, there, but, but you're right. There are certain things that are kind of catch items in a, an election and things that will get people to sit up and take notice. And, you know, maybe those are the things that people are hoping to hook people into. But you're right. Yeah. You gotta convince the, the whole council and the mayor, right? So, yeah.
Yeah. So to me, I don't know, like making those promises and because it, it is, they are, it is a hook almost. And I don't know if they're, they're probably not doing it intentionally. I don't know. But to get votes and then if they're not able to follow through on that, then that's when you get the feedback from residents that, well, you promised this and you're just like another, any other politician who's not going to follow through. But the, the system's not, not set up that way. It's just not how it works.
Right, for sure. No, absolutely. Carrie Anne, is there anything else that you want to get across to the people of Oketoks?
Um, I don't think so. I just, I just hope that the Oketokians actually pay attention to the election and engage and get out there and vote and just find, well, they, they also, um, need to realize that they can vote for up to six candidates for town council. It's not a matter of choosing your favorite and voting for them. So, you know, figure out which six you think would give the best representation on council and, uh, and vote.
Yeah. And that's exactly why, why I'm trying to do this. And full disclosure, I know the first, uh, year that when I moved to Oketoks, I, that there was a municipal election, I went to the election, I had no clue who any of the candidates were, right? I didn't do my due diligence. I didn't do my, my service to the town. Um, and that's part and parcel of why I'm doing this is hopefully another avenue, because you touched on it before, like getting the word across, like, like even the question about town council and, uh, transparency and more, more involvement. Uh, I don't know. I don't know if that's really a legitimate question because, uh, I think councils, open session, you can listen to anything that's going on inside a council, right? So say there's transparency, there needs to be more involvement, I think.
Yes. Cause and it does take a commitment to watch one of those meetings, like they're hours long. And, but, and I, and that's why I think that just for ease of communication, having a more digestible format that people might not have the three hours to commit to watching the live stream. But to be able to get a di- digestible twenty minutes of this is the highlights of what we talked about. And here's how it all unfolded.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Carrie Anne, thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate everybody that's putting their. Carrie Anne, thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate everybody that's putting their name into, to run. Because it's not about the money. It's not about, like, I, and it just blows my mind as to the councillors that are currently on council and the mayor, uh, just how involved they are in the community. And where they're, where they're at. And it's, you know, they're putting in a lot of volunteer hours as well. Because that forty thousand dollars, uh, you know, certainly was probably spent three or four months into their time sitting on, on, on council.
Oh, for sure. And, and that, the, the communication that I had with them too, like was, is it really twenty hours? Because it's advertised as twenty hours a week. And no, the consensus is no.
No, absolutely not.
So you, you definitely have to be prepared for, for evenings and weekends and.
Yes, yeah. Carrie Anne, thank you.
Thank you, Carlin. It was nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too.
Take care.